All right, it's six ten. Guys, ready to get going? Well, thank you all for being here tonight for our special meeting. Yeah, right, we're we're gonna have to live and come this to three minutes tonight. Anyway, yeah, this is gonna be pretty open. We're just gonna have a discussion. I don't even know why we have microphones except for people might join us online, hopefully. Yeah, there you go. Now you guys can pass the microphones around. Yeah, right? We might get feedback if they don't turn them off. Go ahead and start us off. What mood music for setting up an event? Yes, yes. All right, well, we're gonna talk about Winterfest and get it, get it all planned and organized and set up, so. Awesome. Yes, glad you guys are here, because, yes. I don't think the four of it, well, at least one of us can handle it, but I don't think the other three of us can. So you guys are on the ad hoc, you wanna kick it off and do discussion or you wanna just? Okay, well, we're probably gonna keep it short anyway. With the group, probably just, I'd recommend just a little talk, we'll talk about the responsibilities that and the things that need to get done and see if we can delegate some stuff.
Just for starters, in the big picture, we need a nonprofit to handle the monies. So you know, somebody, the city can't be doing that, city can't be cashing checks and making payments and all of that.
So I'm checking with the Parks Director and City of Live Oak. Live Oak does all their own events and they collect all their own donations and cash and everything there. So I left him a message today to call me so he could explain that procedure.
So we think the city, you guys are up to it? Is that something you you wanna do?
Well, we'll have to. I don't see a nonprofit lining up.
So staff is gonna be a support role for us, of course, but we're gonna be doing the heavy lifting with their help. Everybody who showed up tonight, all these great people in this room are gonna be the ones organizing and doing it, otherwise it's not happening.
Well, I'm taking two extended trips during this timeframe and also having a heart procedure done. So I'm gonna be available only on a very spotty basis.
Okay, no problem. We can talk about what's needed then and see what we wanna delegate out and see how stuff goes and if you don't have time for stuff, don't take it on.
Yeah. It's gonna be challenging for me to take anything on.
Okay, that's cool. There's no conflict of interest. We have the ability to run events and we just, the money doesn't go into a general fund. We set up a separate fund for whatever money comes in for the event and then we're putting money into that fund from our general fund because it's a donation we would make anyway. So it's not, it's not our process for us to run an event. We just try not to because we're such limited, have such limited staff and we don't wanna burden them with that, so we try and get the nonprofits to do it. And the money is not an issue.
He's already doing Oktoberfest.
Doing Oktoberfest?
Yeah. Yeah. It's not that simple, unfortunately. It's not. There's a way more to it.
So we have a case where the, well, I'm in their soup kitchen this year and so there is a framework to operate with and they all have their own volunteers there doing their own thing. So and I, I mean, I don't, if we don't have any interest in the community to run it, what does that mean?
People are busy doing their own thing. People still like the event, it's still popular and last year we got rained out, but you know, it was still, still people still came out for the parade and watched fireworks and it was still a good time, but Hello.
Hello darling.
No problem. We're just getting started.
You can hang, just hand it to her, whatever you wanna do. Yeah, give it to her.
Last year? Last year was not good because it rained like a typhoon. They had to move it to the community. And whoever laughed, I mean, things were blowing.
In reality, it doesn't matter what happened last year, we need to focus on right now. Because all the rest of that is water under the bridge and if we wanna make this happen, we need to get people in roles and get started. So it, so the frustration is absolutely valid, 100%, but at this date and time, it's pretty much irrelevant. So we need to just move forward and focus on, are we still gonna try to do the vendors and who's gonna take over what role? So that's really where we need to be focused on. The list that the council members have, if you've had a browse through while you're sitting here, is really all the steps of things that need to be done. Obviously, the date and time is really easy to pick because we always do the second Saturday, because the first Saturday is the Lights Parade in Auburn. So we do the second Saturday. I polled real quickly, Sean and I were looking at this, I pulled up the schedule for last year and a couple of years of that from the chamber, they had always run the event from 12 to eight. With the fireworks being at six and the, or I'm sorry, with the parade at six and the fireworks at 7:15. My recommendation is that we don't start it till two and run it from two to eight instead of that 12, because it is always super duper dead right in the beginning. So if we can, to start with, make an agreement on date and time and then we can move into the next part of where we would need to go. I just, I wanna be really respectful of Larry's time, I know he needs to get out of here. So I'm gonna kinda checklist it if that's okay with you.
Please do. You are.
So I'm no way an expert at this and every single event I have learned more and more, but I got enough to say these are the steps. So are you guys cool with moving it to two o'clock instead of 12 o'clock? Does that, does anybody have any objections to that? Okay. Step number two is going to be your, decide what we need to do for a vendor application. This is even before we decide who's gonna run the vendors or anything else, so. For, I, this is the third of July and then I know what I do for Railroad Days and price wise, I figure we can kind of go right in between the two of them. Which would put a craft vendor at a hundred dollars, a regular food vendor at 150 and food trucks at 225. Because food trucks take a double space, so it's 24 to 30 feet for them. Nonprofit organizations would be $30 and if they have a brick and mortar store, they can have the booth space in front of their booth for 50 bucks. So those are, that runs right in between the cost of Railroad Days and the third of July.
It's just hitting me, that's a significant source of income then.
Yeah, it does. For Railroad Days, my vendors pay about half of my bills, come straight from the vendors themselves. I wanna say for the third of July, it probably covered more than a third, but not quite half for the third of July. Sheet, but that does, that that covers a chunk of it right. Discussion, I wouldn't worry about doing any early bird discounts because we're too late in the game anyways, so just scratch that portion of it. And I can tell you, I've had a lot of vendors ask me about it and doing Winterfest and I just told them, we'll get there.
So we do still have a big interest.
Yeah, I've had lots of people ask and email, you know, and answers, I said, we're not quite there yet. I'll let you know that the email list is ready to go. Okay, so for a craft vendor, a hundred dollars was the proposal. For a food vendor, meaning they set up their own tent, that's 150. A food truck, 225. A nonprofit would be 30. And that doesn't matter if they're just doing informational or they're selling food, it doesn't matter what they're doing, it's just 30 for the nonprofits. And then if you have a store and wanna do a booth, that would be $50. You can fit in if you do all three areas, which I think Winterfest doesn't usually do over there, right? Winterfest doesn't do Railroad Avenue, so. So you would be able to fit in about 70 vendors, or seven, you have 70 spaces, food trucks take two, so. About 70, 65 to 70 would be what you would have room for. And and this is where we that's volunteered to run the vendors and that means you get the email list of the vendors, you're gonna send an email out, you know, hey, this is what we're doing, here's the info. You send a second email that has the attachment, because if you send the attachment on the first one, half the time they lose it, so the attachment with the application goes second. And then you do a lot of email back and forth and they will mail in their application and checks. And the checks would be made out to the city, the person that's running the vendors would basically record them, that they've been paid and then pass those on to the city to be able to make those deposits. I think that would be the easiest way to do it. Man, it's like, I don't deal with that part, so, but that, yeah, that's right, but that way and then expenses would be really easy for the city to write back out, because your expenses are gonna be your toilets and your fireworks. We will try to get the trash cans donated. Banners for your marketing. And then any other banners, yeah. And then, other than that, it's flyers and stuff like that, so. It's not too much. Ron's gonna see if we have to get a separate insurance. We do, you still have to pay for a food permit, that's about 500, it's actually almost $600 from the county, so. But it, there's not a lot of checks for the city to write, so that shouldn't be too much of a stress on them. They'll just get 60 checks and to deposit, so. Yeah, that one's not easy, so, so you have one person that runs your vendors. And so they would send out your applications, they'd take the applications, they would, I run a whole spreadsheet as to who has what, you do have to make sure you don't end up with a bunch of duplicates, like you, you know, we're only gonna let this many food trucks in, we're not gonna have, you know, three taco trucks, because then nobody makes money. Winterfest is enough that you can do too, but I wouldn't do any more than that. And you have to watch the same thing with your craft booths, you don't wanna have 18 jewelry booths, because then nobody makes any money, so you kinda gotta keep an eye on that as to what your products are.
Thanks to you, we can just sit here and nod.
Well, whoever wants to do the vendors, I'm happy to sit with them and help them get it going, but I, to be able to volunteer to say, I wanna do that part, you kinda need to know what you're getting into.
About sponsors.
So sponsors is the next one, we need somebody that is willing to go look for the corporate sponsorships. And Ron says, you know, he's double checking with Live Oak, but the city is in essence a nonprofit, so there can still be donations made to a city. Your total target for fundraising and donations should probably be about 15,000. That's depending on what they do with insurance, but that would be my target is 15,000. And so, yeah, we need somebody who, we can have a fundraising letter put together pretty quick for donations. I know the last two years, we did kind of a, if you give us 500 bucks, you get this, if you give us a thousand, we'll do this. And they just kinda do it in levels, that's how we had some banners with specific names on them. So you need somebody that will go and do some fundraising and go to the businesses and and I do prefer to go to the larger businesses, our smaller businesses in town do enough on a regular basis for our local organizations. That's why I like to go hit the bigger ones and it seemed to work pretty well. Caroline did an awesome job on that, yeah, she raked in most of those donations that we had, so.
Lot of the fundraiser.
Yeah, yeah, we can choose to do fundraising events like we did for the for third, I don't I don't know if that's something we wanna do or we just wanna try to go for the corporate donations versus fundraising events. Fundraising events just takes time on social media and stuff.
I don't know how many car washes I have left in.
No, we're not doing car, no.
Midwinter car wash?
But the car washes make money, so I mean, we, between the two, we made just over $2,000 between the two car washes.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, 1,400 at the first one and seven at the next. Your money is starting at zero, your total target for everything should probably be about 20,000 is your overall budget goal would be about 20,000. Your fireworks will be about the same, so in that 12, if you wanna give them a bigger finale, make it 13,000 for your fireworks alone.
To be, to be technical about it, we paid for nine minutes and got 12, that show.
He, he did good. So yeah, your fireworks will run you about, we'll put it, we'll run high and say 13,000. Your toilets?
Should be cheaper than that though, because it's winter and there's not a lot of demand.
I asked that question. I said, is it cheaper? He said, no. I did very much ask that question, that doesn't mean we can't ask it again. Exactly, so your toilets will run you 4,000. Yeah. That's one vendor. And actually, maybe a little bit more, because he likes cash payments and the city can't do that, so. And we'll run him a little bit higher, we'll make him 42. Um, that is a little bit more than we had for the third and we brought in tw- I don't have those notes right in front of me. How many toilets did we bring in? Three ADA's. I think we had seven hand wash stations and probably 25, 28 toilets and we need to go up.
Paid for seven hand wash.
We paid for seven?
They gave us two extra.
Did they? Oh, that was nice of them. They were nice, they're nice guys. We paid for, I think, like 28, we need to go up just a little bit because they, yeah, because they were all full. We increased from what they had at the third last year, but I didn't go all the way to his recommendation, because I think the $5,000 made me cringe.
And with as many more people that came to town, that was probably everything.
Yeah, I said, okay, I admitted to him, all right, fine, we'll do more. So, yeah, I would probably put us in the 30 range. Winterfest still usually pulls in, if the weather's right, Winterfest pulls in just as many as third of July. So.
But not in the station area at all?
Vendors? Yeah, well, actually, that's true. Well, we had four toilets in the station area, we did. So maybe we'd still be okay at the 25. Either way, I'd, I'd still budget for 4,000 and then we'll adjust.
You could go, if you could get more vendors, you need that area?
You can, when you put vendors over there, you have to work very, very hard to make the crowd move. For some reason, there is a mental block to walking across the tracks and every vendor you put over there is unhappy in the beginning and so we, I work really hard to put things that are gonna draw traffic that direction. And fortunately, everybody was happy on the third, when it was all said and done. We can, the Caroline's Kid Zone worked fantastic to be over there and because that's where everybody sat for the fireworks and the parade, all those vendors were ecstatic. Even the one that was upset twice beforehand. So yeah, so somebody run vendors, somebody to run the corporate donations and then somebody to do the paperwork side and and the basics, so the toilets, the trashcans, the permits. The three biggest parts if we're not gonna do fundraising events. Um, that's part of our contract with the sheriff, our three big events are factored into our contract. The one thing that we did offer from the third is we offered to pay for officers to run traffic afterwards to get everybody out. Because those two 174 intersections are always such a nightmare, so we, as the third, offered to pay to get officers in here to run traffic control. So that was above and beyond what the city contract is. For the sheriff, you're running the two of them about $700 or so? No, for the two. Yeah, because I talked to CHP and the sheriff both. CHP puts it out on a volunteer overtime and somebody signs up for it and it's kind of the same thing through the sheriff. So about $700, I think, is what we came out with. Yeah, for two of them, because you have minimum times, I think the CHP was a minimum of four hours for both of them. So that's about runs. And hopefully the city doesn't have to pay the city for a permit for the banners or for the event. It just comes right back, so, yeah. So that's money out, money in. And then you have the beer garden and my belief is you just call this woman right here and say, hey, Stephanie, can you run my beer garden? And she says, absolutely, and then you don't worry about anything after that and she takes care of it for you. So.
And it is that easy.
It really is, we told her our desire was to make it local as can be, local breweries, local wineries, and she absolutely delivered. And then she ran out of half the beer and ran out of vodka and ran out of the tequila and her staff is amazing and that's not that was everybody that came to visit, none of the Colfax people drank, it was all out of towners. Our beer and wine, not the drinkers. Yep, yeah. So you, you know, the Green Machine did their, does their third, they did it as a fundraiser for all the clubs at the schools, so they staffed the beer garden. You know, for Railroad Days, I'm not in it to make money, the third, we weren't in it either, which is why I just went to the professionals on that one and she takes care of the ABC license and does all of that. If the city is a nonprofit, will that still work for your license? Fantastic. Fortunately, you'll get a little bit back. Yep, we'll just add it back to another account, we'll give it to somebody, so. I firmly believe that is the best way to run a beer garden, because there are so, she takes care of the security, she takes care of the fencing and does all the setup and yeah, so unless anybody has any objections, I would you can tell, you wanna take the thing and tell them how you do your deal?
An immediate so directly to the nonprofit. Sweetly right after that. Whatever leftover effort. Fabricating on, that is just 55% that goes actively.
Yeah.
And what sort of dollars can we expect from that, the gross?
So, so that's what Stephanie sweetly brought me just now, so, and you guys were pretty busy all day long.
One day, up at 3:00 and got their bands playing, that's when they attracted people. Once it started attracting people, had a few people start creeping in, but once the party started going with the band, wasn't as hot and it was going down. We didn't after that, so all the money that we made, we brought in $9,000 in approximately four hours.
And I have here a check that's 2,468.
So, awesome. Yep, I really hate to do this, because I wanna take on as much as I can. So feel free to start throwing stuff my way, because I'm absent, but I have to go back to work.
All right. Good luck. Maybe you and I'll just run the vendors, what do you think? You're good with that?
Anything else?
Okay.
Somebody who's wanna pick up, just please let me know.
Okay, not a problem, go deal with it.
Throw it down whenever I can.
Go do what you gotta. So, you know, Larry, I know you said you are not available a whole bunch. Do you, I mean, the two biggest, the three biggest pieces are the corporate donations, the basic paperwork that needs to be done, from the county permit, the toilets, the trashcans, and then the vendor side. Do you feel that?
What was the cost of the trashcans?
Well, the trashcans, you're going to fill out a thing on, from recology to get a donation from them, because they do donate that. If they don't approve your donation, it'll probably run you just under $900. Because we did, had 40 trashcans and a seven yard dumpster and the bill would have been about 850, I think. I think it was about 850 is what it would have been. They did donate them, yes. So they have a whole form, that's just a phone call to recology and say, hey, we're putting on a vent, I wanna see if you guys would be willing to donate it. They send you back an email with a link and you have to go fill all this stuff out.
And a lot of follow through.
And make sure you get the email back that says, yes, you've submitted this. So you don't end up making a phone call three days before the event and they go, I don't know what you're talking about, and then you have to scramble to get the trashcans here in two days. Of I've done the event or provided? I mean, I have what we had from Railroad Days last year and the third, but I don't have anything beyond that, because you could ask the chamber, I mean, they may be able to tell you who has been very generous to them in the past.
Take that home, because I can start soon.
Okay, yeah.
And do it as I can.
Do you want to take on writing the donation request letter as well, or would you rather somebody else write that and? I mean, I can give you the copy that I have from Railroad Days and the copy from the third and you can kinda put them together and work with it if you want and put a spin on it. I did email on some and Caroline went door to door. She went in person.
Harry and I went to a couple in person and then I talked to quite a few in person and there was a few emails, phone calls.
And to be quite honest, after we went that day, after the bad, I took the letter, string up the fast bullet point next to the
Esther.
Door to door is better.
Yeah.
I'm thinking door to door is better.
It is, it is good to, it is that having that one on one.
It's good. Yeah. Well, and it, it requires follow up because they're going to take it, they're going to think about it and you're going to have to, you know, email them or call them. It may take a couple of times to be able to do that for them. So it will take follow up as a general rule, so.
And you've gone outside the community a little bit.
Absolutely. I mean, we pull people from below Auburn, so I generally have no problem running towards Grass Valley because we pull all them all the way down through Auburn and up because they all attend and we market the event to all of those locations anyways.
That brings me to, but what, what are we competing with? Uh, date one?
The only thing, hold on, that I know is the, what they do in Grass Valley is on the weekends?
They do the Victorian Christmas and the Cornish.
But they're not both on the weekend. One is a weekday, one's Sunday. Yeah, so that's Grass Valley.
Yeah, Grass Valley and Nevada City.
Yeah, and so one of them is on a Saturday, but the other, I think, is Wednesday and Sunday.
I think the one in Nevada City, the Victorian Christmas during the week.
Seems like Cornish.
Well, like I said, one of them is two day, is a weekday and a weekend and one is only on a weekend. And I can never remember which is which, but let's see if I can pull them up here.
Would, would we be sandwiched in between that or after it or before that?
Okay, hold on, so.
We'd be competing with one, whichever one does it on Saturday and I think that's Grass Valley.
Yeah, so Victorian Christmas happens on Sunday. So then I think it's the Grass Valley one that we work with that is on, is on a weekend. For Cornish? Okay.
We're on Friday.
We're on Saturday. It's Saturday. So, yeah, yeah, exactly. Like I said, and Auburn does the lights parade the weekend before, which is why we do it the weekend that we do.
So then to get a shot, that gets you back to the exposure.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, yeah, then Larry, I will email you the two letters that I had and I've never seen the one that Harry did. I'm sure he could email it to you as well. And then you can kind of manipulate those. I know, like I said, we set them up so they have levels of it on there of, you know, donations.
Change them. Very good.
Yeah, so I will, and I'll email it to you in a Word doc. I won't give you PDFs. I'll give you a Word doc so you can.
Larry, if you want. In town.
We can share.
Yeah.
We're going pretty well in Bass Valley and Nevada City.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Auburn.
Yep, exactly. I think we'll get our strongest pull from Auburn and Bo because we're easier to get to. Interstate, where everybody else has to travel. And they do their own thing.
Yeah, just, just make sure you have one document. You're all working off the same thing so that there's no questions about.
Exactly.
That works. Kim, what do you want to do? Well, there's the, the basics that need to get dealt with, which is the toilets, the trashcans and the county permits. So, and, and those are pretty easy ones overall. I say insurance, the city's going to double check on, so hopefully we don't have to do anything about that. So if you want to do kind of just those basic checklist things that are some contacts, would that work for you? Okay. So you're going to have the toilets and the trashcan and the permit. So I'll get, I'll send you all the contact information and, and everything to do those. It should be pretty easy. I know Caroline has the list of how many toilets and all that kind of stuff.
So timing. Something Stephanie said just made me think. The later the fireworks, the more beer we sell.
Yes, but we also don't want to deal with drunks. Yes.
Nobody wants to wait nine months to get another pop of those clients. So too badly, you know, they're allowed two drinks per person.
Right.
So we can't get them to tear their ground because they want to wait another hour.
Right. They go pretty quick.
So maybe we're pretty good at that.
Do you, do you already have in your collection of goodies or have you rented before the propane heaters? So we have something like that to put in your? Okay, okay. Okay. We will have a conversation. We will have a conversation then. Okay. Because, yeah, you did the fair the whole time. And do you have that contract this year too? Okay. We'll talk. Okay. Well, it might be a good partnership. We will have a conversation. Thank you. I know in the past that the chamber has tried to do burn barrels in the streets. So they had somebody that manned them. So there were people there with them. Can you find out if we can do that?
Yeah.
You're no fun.
I'm not, it's my, my, my ability. Little kids running around drugs and fire.
You know. You know.
It's my job to teach, to tell you about the accountability.
I know, but I'm going to ask because I remember the guy who roasted chestnuts over it and it was fantastic. Oh, shit. So, but, and I know they had the wood out there last year. They just never got the people to man them, so it never happened. It's in December. It's not a problem. Yeah.
Is there alcohol in most counties?
Yeah. Yeah.
So you reject their law.
Sure, I'll ask them. I'm on that board. I'll ask them. That's a possibility.
Yeah, it's a good call.
Yeah, so that does. And, you know, and then the other thing is just the volunteers the day of. Well, obviously we need to, you know, do banners and stuff. That stuff's easy. I mean, I'm happy to do the social media side of it. It's really easy. Sean is willing to, to do the vendor stuff and I, and I'm okay working side by side with him. Because once it's all ready to go, it just requires babysitting to do the vendors. It really just requires everybody following through on their commitments and we'll be good. Because, yeah.
Have we talked about schedule?
Yeah. What part?
I said two to eight.
Two to eight is, well, yeah, so in the past they've done twelve to eight. I'm recommending we drop it to two to eight. So you would have, where's those notes right here?
What time we and I will do soup kitchen will be?
They do it. I want to say they normally do it from like four up until the parade starts. I think they, yeah, I, we can check with the Seroptimists. I'll add that to my list.
Caroline?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, actually, when I mean that you're both had banners. And what did you say about?
Oh, that's just the social media stuff, you know, pushing it out on the, on the social media and for vendors and for events. So you have to push your flyers out to those to get your vendors.
But all, all I was concerned about, whatever we do. That's, Gary and I. Got it down. We can give it to you in front of plots that make it work with social media.
Yeah, no, I can work with Gary. That's easy. Okay, so if we do a ten o'clock road closure, eleven o'clock, the vendors can come in. A two o'clock start. Santa would run from two to five thirty. In a perfect world, he'll be in the theater. The parade is at six. And the fireworks are at seven fifteen. Do you want to contact Jeff and line him up for that, the fireworks? Since you've got that relationship. We're going to say, side note here, she talked to Jeff about the phone call from Hanson's. The gate had been opened and it was a row of cars going up the street to exit. They came up the dirt and went out the gate, so he couldn't clean the road.
Yeah.
So that's what happened. So we have to either make sure that gate stays locked. That doesn't mean people don't have keys to it or we got to put somebody there, but he couldn't clean the road because of the fireworks. So I'm communicating that with Hanson's, but that's the answer we got. Well, it's got a lock on it, but there's lots of people that have keys to those locks and I, so I'm whether it's a UP. Fire department and UP. Yeah, so that, I mean, that, we got to figure out how to deal with that, but. If that would, yeah, just for the day. Yeah, so, but that's what that was.
That road off. There's a dirt road that you can walk to.
That's it, that's the Wicome, but we're, uh, we're talking off of Central there where Hanson Brothers was.
One year it's blocked. Because Christie works there at the Denlin.
Yeah, you're going to get all your locals leaving that way and then they're going to have following them because.
Okay. Oh, good. All right, I'll send you all the contact information for everything you said you wanted to do.
Got a good start? Come back in a month?
So, yeah, I mean, really, right now it's going to fall on Larry and or work in the donation side. Once you have a draft of a letter, make sure to send it to Ron so that the city can go through it since we're slapping the city logo on it. So I don't know if we need to have Connor review it. Yeah, so whatever draft letter you guys put together, make sure. Yeah, so we'll put the city logo up on the top of it and everything, but so. Yes, yeah. And then I will help. Sean and I'll, I'll do vendors and I'll do the, the marketing stuff with Gary. And then Caroline's going to do the fireworks. And then we'll just have to sweet talk Tammy to cash a bunch of checks for us. And start a, whatever they need to do to start a separate fund. Got that? Okay. Okay. If we're going to put the city name and logo on the vendor application, does Connor need to review this as well? Okay. Then I will send that to him. Incorporate the city logo? Yeah, um, once you guys decide what you, your letter, send it to Ron. Amanda's got the logo, but he'll send it to the attorney and let them check it before we, and then they'll give it back to you and, and get it out. So, yeah. Yeah. The, the one thing I know that Kim will end up needing for the toilets and will need is whatever the city's EIN number is for donations. So I'm assuming Shanna can get that for us because we'll want to, we'll want to have that for all, on the donation letter. And I know we'll need it for the toilets or the trashcans. So we'll need that. All right. I will go ahead and send an email out to my vendors confirming that it's happening. This is the time and date. Hold tight for, give me two, three days, probably till Monday, and then I'll have an application for him. But we can do a teaser. And get that up and running.
What, what number is this one? Is this the fortieth, the tenth, the fourth?
Oh, that would be a question for the chamber. I have no idea.
Okay.
They may, they may know. I, I don't know.
We thought about music.
Well, and then that is the other question. Do we want to try to pull in a band? It's hard because of the weather and how cold it is. I don't think we've normally. And you're, I think DJ would be, that's good, that it's cold. Yeah, so if, if you want to maybe send some feelers out and send me a, send us a couple of suggestions. The date is going to be Saturday, December thirteenth. And it would be basically from two to six, huh? Yeah, so it would be two to six.
What would be two to six?
The band, because they'll be done before the parade starts. So you would want them to be done before the parade. It's the second, it's the December, what do you say, thirteenth? Yeah, because it's the second Saturday. Yeah. Well, and we can, I know one of the churches normally does carols in the Roy Tom, so we'll be able to work that. And once the word gets out that it's happening, we'll be able to add some extra stuff.
Chad, Winterfest and Court Fest is taking place at least five times. Given that the event typically runs every December, you can almost certainly expect this thing to.
Well, I've lived here for ten years and it's happened every year. We even did a parade and we did it. So, I mean, we even had parades during COVID when they didn't let you. Yeah. So we, we worked a parade.
Does, does he vote maybe for anything?
Um, usually we have carolers over there. That's the, the norm.
These guys that have a band of humans. And they're very good.
Yeah.
Special musicians and kind of fun.
You can, you can ask them if they're interested in it and. Yeah, definitely sense of feeling because we can put music in several different areas very easily. It's only if they need power that things change where I can put them because we can do power at Roy Tom, we can do power right here. If we wanted to go into Railroad Street, there's power over there. So power is the only thing that changes where you can put a band, but I would love to have multiple spots with music if we can do it.
Agree.
And, and the thing is, and it goes on all the applications, that this event is rain or shine. And it's going to happen and they don't get their money back. So, because we've spent it all.
Crazy question. Can fireworks be shot off in the rain? Why not?
Yeah, yeah.
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 Can't see.
Yeah, I mean, last year was foggy, which was kind of fun. But, yeah, no, we could do it in the rain. We've done them in the rain. I remember sitting there getting wet with the kids. So, yeah, they can go in the rain. Yep, the, yeah. It's still very similar to third of July. It just depends on the weather and that, that's what changes everything. Yeah, well, and last year's problem was it was huge wind. Yeah, well, and last year's problem was it was huge wind all up until five-ish. And so, yeah. So they, they moved it up to the Sierra Vista Center, but you could only put ten or eleven booths up there. Um, and then the Lions didn't want to do the parade because the weather was horrible and it's understandable. We still had a parade. It still happened and we still had fireworks, so.
Talking to folks tonight, who usually does the fair.
Mm-hmm.
Based on the numbers that they see at the fair and around, you see there, I think that's seven thousand plus.
Yeah. I believe it. Like I said, and there, there's two numbers. There's numbers in total attendance and numbers we packed in here for the parade and the fireworks.
Yeah.
So.
You chose fireworks at seven fifteen. Did you just?
No, that's what was in the previous schedules. I just pulled up, went to the chamber's website.
And I used to manage a stage at the Sweet Music Festival. And the main stage would end.
Mm-hmm.
And people going back to where they camped had to go past another stage, which had a beer booth right next to it.
Very busy.
We timed that music to start as soon as possible after the main stage ended. So that people didn't pass the beer.
That's right, that's right.
It made a difference, you know?
Oh, it does, absolutely. Um, but yeah, the, the six o'clock parade and seven fifteen fireworks, that's just, that's what was in the computer. We can alter it. Um, I know we're, the parade's going to take a little smidgen longer because we're going to change the parade route. Um, but that meeting still has yet to happen.
You're saying, what, seven thirty? I mean, does that really make any difference? No.
No. Nope, cold. It only makes a difference in how cold it is. Yeah. Because we don't have to wait for it to get dark, so we have a lot of leeway when it happens. They do the parade early because it's dark early, so.
It's July, I can launch it off my deck, but I go three o'clock and.
I, I was up at one thirty. I was up at one thirty, so I feel you. Um, is there anything else we need? Is there anything we didn't cover, Caroline? I don't remember bands per se. Bars? Well, yeah, because, I mean, last year the chamber was running it. A bar, a bar. Last year the chamber did, was running one and I don't know what they were going to do down here. I just know what they ended up doing up at the top. There's usually, yeah, no, they usually have something, but they also, you're going to work in the warm drinks. You're going to want your hot toddies and hot butter rum and, you know. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's the next weekend. Lots of peppermint schnapps and hot chocolate.
Maybe the chamber doesn't run the event. They might want to participate.
What was that? I do too. There's always a mason jar in my fridge, year round. Oh. That's right. She'll write a contract. You have. That's right. You're going to have to sign that contract with her. Yeah, we really did. And then we had a couple of emails, because here's the bar list. Here's the update on who's going to do the breweries and, okay. Yep. Oh, how cool.
Begging for money, get all those ale shops.
They want to participate again. They said, who let us know, whatever.
They might be sponsoring too.
We're, we're in.
Well, they, they also sponsor by donating product that we don't have to pay for.
So do you do sponsorships too? You have? And so, the, so the, that people participate.
They know her well. Mm-hmm, there she is. And she got good enough, she had to hire an accountant. It was fantastic. She drew the line. It was good. Mm-hmm. It was worth it. Kind of like when you do your taxes. It was worth it. All right. My head book is going to kill me. All right. Hey guys, we're done.